Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of February 23, 2023 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting forth, date time and location was read in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed; it is now being reconvened. I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Our first order of business tonight will be to honor one of our outgoing board members. As board members, we usually in January, we honor all our outgoing board members. And unfortunately, Mr. Bubba was unable to join us that night, and he's here tonight to join us. And as we honor him, I'm honored tonight on behalf of the school board to express our gratitude to Mr. Bubba for his service to the teachers and students of the Wayne community. Mike has been an outstanding member of our team, and we would like to take this opportunity to recognize him this evening. Through his tenure, Mike has consistently demonstrated a commitment to the excellence and a genuine concern for the well-being of the students of the Wayne. His leadership has been instrumental in facilitating our district through some unprecedented times, as well as developing and implementing strategies of promoting academic achievement in our district. In addition to his leadership qualities, Mike has been a person of integrity, who has always been true to his values. He is someone who let you know how he feels, but he does so with respect and professionalism. He has been a role model for many of us on the board. As Mr. Bubba moves on to new opportunities, we thank him for his dedication, hard work, and contributions to the Wayne school system. Mike, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Ten years is a long time to spend on this board. It's not always easy. It's not... It doesn't make for sometimes even friends to be friends. You have to make decisions that not everybody's going to like. The only thing I tried to do for 10 years was make a decision that I thought was the right thing. Doesn't have to be agreed with, but that's how I want it to be. So for 10 years, that was my goal. We did accomplish an awful lot, and I can thank my colleagues for that. Mr. Pavak, Mrs. Kazan, who's been here, Mr. Duffy, and other board members who came later, Mr. Giardano for a couple of years. But it was all about trying to move things forward because I grew up here. I went to Wayne Hills High School in Skyler. I wanted to give back because I got a lot out of being here, though they want a hell of a lot more football games after than when I was there. Just saying. But that's kind of really where it was all from. Just wanted to give back, and I'm glad I did. Thank you.
Mr. President, through the chair, I'd like to express my congratulations to Mr. Bubba. Mr. Bubba, you've never been so short-winded. You have the floor. Anything else you'd like to say? You're good? All right. Well, congratulations.
You said it perfectly, Mike. We did not always agree. But at the end of the day, I think we all understood that we were all here for the right reasons, even if we couldn't agree on how we got there. And in spite of that, we got an awful lot done, and you'll be missed. Good luck.
Mike, you were my mentor when I first came here. When I was elected, I wasn't expected to be elected, so it was quite a shock when I first got on. Don looked at Mike and said, "He's yours." And I went, "Oh, boy, here we go." But you guided an old grizzled veteran of the school systems himself and opened a whole new world up, so I'm eternally grateful, and this board's going to miss you.
May I make a comment?
Once again, Mike, you want to step up? The floor is yours. You're good?
So I'd like to just make a few comments on behalf of the administration. So we've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Bubba since 2014, when I joined the school district, and Mr. Bubba's been serving since 2013, as he mentioned. He also served as president in 2019 and vice president in 2015, so it's no surprise that superintendents spend quite a bit of time on weekends working, although I do try to keep Saturday morning free of Board of Ed business. I try. But I always remember one especially important Saturday morning that I spent talking to Mr. Bubba about the outside chance that if things went our way, there was the possibility of having full-day kindergarten in Wayne, which was an issue that had dogged the community for many years and recently ended, at the time, with not one but two failed votes with the public. The plan involved bringing kindergarten to Wayne by 2021 with a phased-in approach that required a big investment in the Preakness School, the investment of nearly $5,000 to create an early childhood center. Of course, that was money that the district had to generate internally. There was not... This was not a public vote. This was a situation where we had to raise funds to invest in Preakness School, and were able to find savings throughout the district to come up with the money within our operating budget. We also had to come up with the money to double the size of our kindergarten staff. We were also aided, though, at the time, with an increase in state aid. So Mr. Bubba was an immediate supporter of that plan, and sure enough, by September of 2021, our first full-day kindergarten classrooms welcomed students and parents. While most districts remained stagnant during the pandemic, because you have to remember this was going on during the pandemic, Wayne certainly did not. We did the opposite. So congratulations, Mr. Bubba, for your many great years of service in the Wayne Board of Education and the difference that you made for the staff, the students, and the community of Wayne.
Ready?
Yeah.
I know I say this every year when I come up here, but I am happy to be able to say it again. It truly is my favorite night of the year. It's not every day that we get to recognize our teachers and educational service providers, and everyone deserves to be recognized. The job is not easy. I love seeing standing room only and the support of your coworkers and your family, because I know so much time is taken away from your families to dedicate to your students and to our schools. So tonight's just a small opportunity for us to recognize you and thank you. For those of you who are not familiar with this award, I'm going to tell you a little bit about it. The Governor's Educator of the Year program is designed to highlight educational innovation, student achievement, the rewards of teaching, and the important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. This celebratory program integrates the Teacher of the Year program with the Governor's Teacher Educational Services Professional Recognition Program to continue recognizing our state's best teachers and educational service professionals. Tonight, we recognize one teacher and one educational service professional from each of our 15 schools. Before inviting each to receive their certificate, I would like to congratulate all of our winners for their commitment and dedication to our school and the community. It's truly an honor to be here and to congratulate you and celebrate you for your outstanding work. I would also like to give a special recognition to two staff members who decided to move on in the program to be considered for the County Teacher of the Year Award. This opportunity is extended to teachers who won the School Governor Educator of the Year Award, and what's required is completing a very detailed and comprehensive application, which includes many essays which detail their professional background, teaching style, exemplary lessons, and leadership vision. I requested to read through the two submissions and was so impressed and wanted to just share a few highlights. I know Maureen's not here tonight with us. Maureen Damer, she is one of the teachers who submitted. She teaches our high school TV production class at Wayne Valley, and she also serves as an advisor to the Video Club. Reading through her application, she shared that she imparts knowledge, teaches her students important life skills, and inspires creativity, collaboration, and communication. Ms. Damer also serves as the executive producer of the Wayne Valley High School Television's YouTube channel. She works with other educators in the building to highlight school programs, honor educators, and give community members a glimpse into the exciting and impactful work with Wayne Valley High School. Ms. Damer is most proud of the Wayne Valley Schools Community Third-Party Compliments Project, where students organize a production to capture heartwarming compliments, read to students and staff to offer praise and appreciation. Ms. Damer's done an exceptional job engaging students, parents, and community members in the life of the Wayne student, and has made her mark achieving shared goals. We wish her the best of luck with her pursuit in being named the county... I'm sorry, the Passaic County Teacher of the Year. Todd Green is the second teacher who submitted. Is Todd here?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Todd. I had fun reading your application. A lot of great stories, too many to share, but I picked out my favorites. Todd shared his love for teaching high school math and the satisfaction he gets from creating positive learning experiences and lasting memories about their high school experience. His submission emphasizes his great pride in teaching AP Calculus and the sequence of assignments he does with students to set his expectations and get them invested in striving for excellence in math achievement. He goes above and beyond to engage his students and even takes time out of his weekends to offer Saturday AP class pizza reviews for his students. These sessions are well-attended and a testament to his ability to connect with his students and expand their opportunities to learn with him and prepare for their AP exams. Students engage in creative lessons involving music, movement, and games to their memorable learning moments. Mr. Green said he brings passion, patience, and positivity to his classroom daily and supports each student with what they need to succeed. We're very fortunate to have Mr. Green as part of our instructional staff and are grateful for his work with our students and his interest in taking on leadership roles within our school district to support our district goals and initiatives. His well-deserving of the accolades he receives from students, parents, and colleagues in our school community, and I wish him the very best in his pursuit to be named the Passaic County Teacher of the Year. At this time, we'd like to recognize each of our Governor Educator of the Year nominees. When we call your name, you can come up. I know we have something from our Wayne Education Association, and we have certificates for you that Dr. Toback will be handing out. We should have him stay here. Yes. So once you come up, stay here, and this will give us an opportunity to take some pictures afterwards. Yep. All right. Did the last of the housekeeping items? Make sure you get to enjoy. We'll continue rolling our little slideshow. Tomorrow, it'll be posted online, and we have some additional surprises about each of these individuals that will be shared as well. From the Early Childhood Center, congratulations to Teacher of the Year Suzanne Baumann. And from our Early Childhood Center, the Educational Service Professional of the Year From AP Terhune Elementary School, Teacher of the Year, congratulations goes to Kim DeSesio. And the Educational Service Professional of the Year is Roe DePalma. From James Fallon Elementary School, Teacher of the Year, congratulations goes to Jacqueline And Educational Service Professional Denise Malone. From JFK Elementary School, Teacher of the Year, congratulations goes to Denise Indomenico. And congratulations to Education Service Professional Linda Mandarino. From Lafayette Elementary School, congratulations to Teacher of the Year Francesca Vitale. And congratulations to Ed Services Professional Kelly McKay. From Packinac Elementary School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Elizabeth Collins. And congratulations to the Education Service Professional Carolyn Allen. From Pines Lake Elementary School, congratulations to Teacher of the Year Lori Barrows. And congratulations to Education Service Professional Jody Jensen. From Randall Carter Elementary School, congratulations to Teacher of the Year Brittany Kotzadam. And congratulations to the Education Services Professional Colleen Lee. From Ryerson Elementary School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Steve Rodriguez. And congratulations to the Education Services Professional Maria Gravet. From Tunis Dai Elementary School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Holly Perry. And congratulations to the Education Services Professional Kristen Valencia. From Anthony Wayne Middle School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Jenna Gerilli. And congratulations to the Education Services Professional Angela Tetla. From George Washington Middle School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Laura Medley. And congratulations to the Education Services Professional Patricia Montini. From Skyler Colfax Middle School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Robert Sardi. And congratulations to the Education Service Professional Leanne Christian. From Wayne Hills High School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Todd Green. And congratulations to the Education Service Professional Harrison Bender. From Wayne Valley High School, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year Maureen Damer. And congratulations to the Education Service Professional Jennifer Montana. At this time, we'll take a couple of pictures, and then we'll take a 15-minute break so that you can get pictures with your families, teachers, and anything else that you desire. I know there's lots of opportunities for great photos. And you wanted to share a few words?
Yeah. Please. Good evening, everyone. For those of you that do not know me, I am Ida Ferrante, and I am the President of the Wayne Education Association. I'm so pleased to be here tonight as we congratulate all of our Governor's Educator of the Year recipients. This award recognizes the contributions of not only just those in front of you, but the entire teaching profession in Wayne and in New Jersey. At a time when our profession faces constant challenges, the educators, that's our teachers, our nurses, our secretaries, and support staff, along with all of our members, have distinguished themselves as hard-working stewards of our community here in Wayne. It is difficult to properly underscore the effort it takes to accomplish what these folks before us have done. Just think for a minute. Most people in the service industries must work with one client at a time. Teachers must service their clients, their students, up to 25 at a time. They must develop plans for all their learners and all their styles. They work long hours at school and at home. These honorees represent the reason why Wayne schools have such a sterling reputation and that New Jersey has once again declared as one of the top education states in our nation. Congratulations once again to all these fine educators. Thank you.
Hang on, first. Now I have to get a word. I would like to thank each and every one of you and every teacher in this district for what they do every day. Many people don't realize your day doesn't end when the bell rings at the end of the day. In a lot of cases, your day's just starting. The SGOs, the doc logs, and all those great things that people in Trenton think you all need to do because you have nothing else to do. Well, I can tell you, each and every one of us up here, we appreciate what you do every day, and I wholeheartedly thank you, each and every one of you.
I'm going to ask you all to come right in the middle as close as you can, be friendly, love each other. Two layers, two layers here. Right, two layers. Just saying.
It's recess. No, I said, it's your recess. That's why I'm looking at you. Just saying.
This is the good crowd. I think it's a big crowd, good crowd next time. That features a lot of kids. Close right there. Sure, not for sign up. The first time it presses, it's okay.
It's recess. I said, it's your recess. That's why I'm looking at you. Just saying.
This is the good crowd. I think we need a big crowd, big crowd next time. That features a lot of kids. Sure, not for sign up. On the first time, it's okay.
The human way of a man.
Oh, of this meeting? There's two, there's two. This is. It's not about the agenda. I've had enough to hear with the public abuse. Not very well, but it's your job, that's for sure. They don't pay me a dozen. Always from the good part in place, whether you're afraid of it or not. Yes. Are you gonna leave? And I'm like, no, I believe I think 10 years, you know? It's my 10 year. I have a lot of other things that I'd like to tell you that I don't like. I have plenty of things. So, you know, we are here to educate. It's not about politics. I actually graduated before I made. You know. Why not give back, make sure that that doesn't go down the drain? I didn't get on the education committee, but my thing, the tradition, we can charge the age children. Right, I can't be yourself. That's not our job.
I really want to watch a lot of baseball. I mean, I kind of keep up with my daughter's boyfriends now. They love baseball, so they kind of reel me back in. But I'm a big, like I told you, soccer. The amount of European soccer I could watch on weekends, it's mind-blowing. Between Spain, England, and France. And then, like I said, baseball. You know, my other daughter now is getting into Formula One stuff. They had this whole, yeah, racing part, and it's, I think they made some sort of series on television or streaming. And so they're all into it. My older, my nephew, better friends. They're like trying to get into it. I love it. I grew up, like, watching NASCAR and Busch Grand National. My uncle had a car at Busch Grand National. It was like, I loved cars, but I got away from it. Like, I could focus on soccer. Now it's like, now I'm like, how am I gonna do my weekend if I don't have a few? Hey, look, my kids, that's the way you participate with them. That's great. I'll watch. Yeah, a couple of drinks, appetizers. You know, just like the Super Bowl Sunday. Everyone's into it. I don't go to, I don't do the big parties anymore. Just, since COVID, just close family. That's enough. I just don't play. I know, I just bet on it. I don't know. That's a lot of.
People are interested. People are interested.
I go, you gotta ride it on a game. Because I didn't want to know, like, as soon as they sit down, like, oh, you know? That's why I'm asking spreads. I say, because they do, some of them do put money behind it. The two boyfriends, they kind of, they put a couple of bets together. It's so easy to do. I can bet on all the stuff. I'm not sure it's boring.
Free men and foot out.
I love that our kids have that.
There's even more lemons. The over is gonna be about six.
He will be. I know. I have to part the conversations every day now. I think I need to see one.
She made it.
It was really nice. It was really, really nice. And it needed in a bunch of different ways. Right?
Everybody was just waiting for the audit report they wanted to hear. Dr. Toback.
Sorry about that. So, my report this evening is very brief because I recognize we have a number of committee reports in addition to our student reports. So I'd like to remind the community that our next board meeting on March 2nd is important, includes the first public input session on the budget, as well as our mid-year goal report. Speaking of goals, this week included quite a bit of activity pertaining to our district goals. Sage's Learning is putting the final touches on the special education report, which will be shared with the Board of Education in just a few days when the goal, or when the report is complete. Also, at the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, which meets on March 23rd, will be presenting that report as well. We also had a learning management committee meeting this week where we learned more about how learning management systems can add to our instructional programs. So it's something that we're working on. And then, as far as the Wayne Education Foundation, we're excited to announce that the Wayne Education Foundation is holding its second denim and diamonds themed magical gala at the Brownstone House on Tuesday, March 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. This year's event will be featuring the extreme magic of Eric Wilzig, award-winning illusionist who's been on America's Got Talent and Live with Jimmy Fallon. All proceeds will benefit the Wayne Township Public Schools. The cost of a ticket is $75. For the general public, $60 for district employees. Fire will be in this Friday's newsletter. To purchase tickets to the gala and to learn more about the Wayne Education Foundation's mission, visit their website at WayneEducationFoundation.org. Please come out and support the Wayne Education Foundation and their efforts to enhance our educational program. Also, just in conclusion, the HIB report, reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public Schools. There have been 17 incidents of HIB investigated since my last report. Eight of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIB.
Thank you, sir. Student reps?
Good evening. The Wayne Hills DECA chapter began in 2020 during the most unprecedented time. In the short time, the chapter has grown to almost 60 active members. In January, 55 students competed at the Northern Region District Competition in the Meadowlands. Of those that competed, 14 students placed in their role-play events, and a total of 28 students will compete at the state level in both business role-play and paper presentations. The New Jersey State DECA competition will be held February 27th through March 1st, 2023, at Harris Hotel and Casino in Atlantic City, New Jersey. Students compete for the organization's top honors and earn the right to represent New Jersey at the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida, in April. Ms. Garahi, Ms. Pyro, and the Wayne Hills administrative staff are very proud of all of the Wayne Hills High School DECA competitors and wish them luck in their competitive events next week. The Wayne Hills Photo Class is proud to announce that nine of the students placed in the Regional Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest. The gold key placement goes to Ibrahim McCool. Silver key placements go to Emily Bollinger, Victoria Kragel, Rachel Rotis, and Jessica Smith. And finally, there are four honorable mentions: Mia Cuccinello, Amy Hecht, Alyssa Mica, and Riley Thompson. Congratulations to all. Congratulations to the Wayne Hills Millennium Winter Guard on their first-place finish in Scholastic Regional AA at the Pegasus Indoor Guard Show last Saturday. The Guard will be competing across the state over the next few months. On Saturday, January 21st, Wayne Hills hosted over 230 students and teachers from all over North and Central Jersey for the New Jersey Section of the American Association of Physics Teachers Physics Olympics. This is the first time this competition has taken place at Wayne Hills. Members of the Wayne Hills Engineering Club formed two teams of six. Wayne Hills Team One won first place in the Bernoulli Ball Event with Colin Graves navigating a course of rings with a ping-pong ball floating in a low-pressure air pocket over a blow dryer in the fastest time. Nadir Gani competed and came in second place for Hills in the Laser Target Shoot Event, placing an equilateral prism in the right location to aim a laser beam at a target. These two high scores, as well as good showing in all the other events, led Wayne Hills to a second-place overall trophy. The Counseling Department continues to host a regular group of therapy dogs from the bright and beautiful organization for bimonthly visits during lunch to promote wellness. Students and staff come in regularly and benefit from the fun and snugly break in their day. In addition, Louis, our resident counseling department therapy dog, is also making regular appearances in the counseling office and has been a great help for students and staff. Wayne Hills High School SDA captains and officers recently went to a Broadway dance workshop for Hamilton, the hit Broadway musical. They participated in an hour-and-a-half workshop with a current member of the Hamilton cast, Thane Jasperson. Then, they all went to see the Hamilton Broadway Musical in New York City. The Wayne Hills SDA show will take place March 9th, 10th, and 11th. The Wayne Hills Cultural Club is running a food drive from February 21st through March 3rd for the Kumak and the Patterson community to help combat food insecurity for students and their community. Donations of pasta, rice, cold cereal, and canned protein are greatly appreciated. The Wayne Hills Leo Club is doing a supply drive for the earthquake victims. teachers, and community members who participated. Our Boys Basketball Team made it to the Passaic County Championships in a victory over Eastside High School. This is just the third time ever that Wayne Valley Boys Basketball has made it to the Passaic County Championship game. The last two times were in 2007 and 2016. The Valley Dance Team competed at the DTU National Championship in Orlando, Florida. They placed third in Varsity Jazz and seventh in Varsity Palm, finishing top 10 in America. Congratulations to these enthusiastic dancers for representing Wayne Valley across the nation. The Indoor Track Team competed in the state group meet on February 18th. Congratulations to Winston Calvill for placing fourth in the shot put event. Wayne Valley Boys Swimming won 92-78 over Morris Hills and 99-71 over Mount Olive in the NJSIAA quarterfinals tournament. Congratulations to Max Matthews, Zach Lee, Max Carter, and Matt Piasentini for breaking the 200-meter relay school record with their time of 1 minute, 43 seconds, and 30 milliseconds. Girls Fencing are now Passaic County Champions, and they finished the season with an overall record of 9-2. Good luck to Karina Festa, Nancy Malajda, and Julia Robel, who will be competing in the NJ State Championship on February 26th. The Junior Varsity Wrestling Team brought it home at the Passaic County Championships, with six of Valley's own becoming county champions. Congratulations to Roddy Melendez, Cole Perry, Alan Tse, Anthony Rankin, Adam Newfall, and Dan Sadek for their hard-earned wins. Last but not least, congratulations to football coach Cutlars for receiving the Angelo Bertelli Award for an incredible 10-win season, for becoming the SFC Patriot White Division Champions, and for his overall commitment to the Wayne Valley Football Team. Cutlars has also recently achieved 100 total wins in his career. Thank you.
This time, we will call on our auditor, Catherine Mantell, to come up and give us our district audit report.
As she's approaching the podium, I'd just like to point out that the board in front of them has a financial highlight handout and that this presentation references V2 on tonight's agenda under emergent for acceptance of the annual audit, the June 20, 2022 annual audit.
Tough act to follow. A lot of excitement in the air tonight. It was really, truly exciting to be here and witness the teachers being honored. So on a lesser note, but just as important and really, I think, good news is we completed the audit for the district for June of '22, seems like forever ago. And I'm here to just give you the highlights because the report itself is 170 pages long, and I try to highlight what is important for each board member to be somewhat familiar with. So we just talked about fund balance year after year after year, and so we compare fund balance at June of '21 to June of '22. It was down 1.8 million. So would that be of concern? No, because when you look at the midsection down below, it says why it's down 1.8 million. You had a budgeted withdrawal to Capital Reserve of 1.2 million, maintenance reserve withdrawal by resolution was 1.949, and transfer to Capital Projects Fund from Capital Reserve. You add them up, that was $5.7 million reduction in order to do projects. So I always say to people, don't just say, oh, fund balance is down 1.8 million, you gotta look at why. So I think that you had a lot of project initiatives, and that's always a positive thing. Now, you'll see the changes in Capital Reserve, Maintenance Reserve, and they're outlined on the second page, but when you get to the bottom line, the unassigned is what the state will dictate certain regulations. And so prior to COVID, it was you couldn't have more than 2%. Then for '21, '20 and '21, it was 4%. And, excuse me, '21 and '22, it was 4%. And it's going back to 2% in June of '23. So because the district put money in reserves in June in order to do those projects, you were actually at 2% at June of '22. But you also had $2.2 million of unbudgeted extraordinary aid that you didn't use in '22. And I just confirmed with Bill and Cheryl today that the board didn't appropriate any of those funds. So that's a positive. That is going to be money that, depending how your year plays out in '23, that you may or should have available to deposit in reserves in June of '23. So that's a very strong signal. And then at the bottom of the page, I always like to look at how much fund balance you're using. I know in the years that we've been here, the talk had been to reduce reliance on fund balance. Well, you did it. You did it. You got it to zero. And that made me very happy because that's a bit of a burden to make sure that you're going to regenerate that. So to be completely independent of using your own resources to fund the budget is a very positive move. So then I'll take you to the second page and talk about Capital Reserve. You started the year with the 8.681. You deposited $2.6 million in June of '22. There were some unexpended balances in the Capital Projects Fund that were funded by Capital Reserve. So when they're finished and there's excess funds left over, they have to be returned to the Capital Reserve. And then again, those budgeted and withdrawals by resolution left you with 7,469 in June. And then we always look ahead and say, okay, what has happened up until this date? And so you have withdrawn in your '22, '23 year 2.7 million. And Cheryl was kind enough to go over what projects. Those were four for Bethany today to remind the board that it was the Wayne Hills High School next-year Generation Science Lab and bathroom renovations in several elementary schools. Then in Maintenance Reserve, you began the year with 3.8 million. You were able to deposit 3 million, and you withdrew 1.949, which left you at 4.850 in June. And then again, you withdrew money for the HVAC improvements in the board office, and then, most recently, the broad grants that you authorized. So that leaves you with 8.15 currently, but hopefully, there will be money that you can deposit into reserves. And I'm a big proponent of wherever you can and whenever you can to deposit money to reserves because you have a 2% limit on spending, and that includes operating capital, maintenance, all of it. So anytime you're able to achieve some savings in your budget and you're able to put money in reserve, that's a good thing. Then I just showed you what projects have unexpended balances on them in the Capital Projects Fund. That's Fund 30. That's items that were funded either by bonds or Capital Reserve, and these are the ending Food Service Fund, again, that fluctuated greatly through the pandemic. As you can see, the subsidy reimbursements in '21 were $1,197. In '22, they were $5,285. So you've had this huge influx of subsidies, you know, the internal revenue was down. I know that school districts are going to be working with food service management companies to figure out how you get back on track with that because it's been two and a half, almost two and a half years, right, of the pandemic effect. So with all those subsidies that have come in, you ended the year with the investment in capital assets is just the value of the equipment that you have, but the unrestricted is the operating funds. So at June of '22, that was $2,429, pretty high, all due to those subsidies. And then when you're receiving the federal reimbursements, they have a limit on what you can have in net cash resources. It's not dollar-for-dollar the unrestricted fund balance, but it's pretty close. I think the only thing I can think of offhand that it excludes is any inventory that you have, so it's pretty close. So the district was $1.4 million over what they say the max should be, but with that influx of funds, you can't be expected to be able to manage them in a short period of time. So we did make a comment in the management report saying that you were over, but that you had a plan to reduce it, and so we don't see that as a problem. In your extended day program, because you charge salaries there, we have to allocate part of the pension liability and all the deferred inflows and outflows. And I know last year, when I presented this, I just showed the GAAP accounting number, and I said, that's not fair to the board because how can you look at this and make decisions seeing a $774,000 deficit in net position? So this year, I separated it to say, this is what the operations were, and then when you add all those pension entries, it comes to the negative 774. So net operating position in the extended day program for 2022 ended at 48,839. As you can see, in '21, the revenue versus the expenditures was a draw on the funds of $311,000. In '22, it was $51,000. So you just have to be careful, make some adjustments there because all of these enterprise funds are supposed to be completely self-supporting. And so you want to make sure that the revenues will cover the expenses and not that pensions information at the bottom. So tried to make that clearly presented for you. And then the wraparound program was liquidated during the year. So you see, last year, there was $36,000 of net position, and that was closed out to zero. And then with the long-term liabilities, you can see the district has bonds payable. There's only one, two more payments left as of June. Yes, 5.2 million, so two more payments as of June of '22. So I know there's talk of possible referendum, and that's, it's good to keep a level on the tax levy for debt service. And then there are some premiums when those bonds are sold. They are amortized at the same rate as the bonds, so when those bonds are fully paid off, those premiums will be gone. And then the net pension liability, we're up to the eighth year that pension has been reported, and as you can see, a big reduction during the year. We have no, we have no, what do I say, no control over those numbers. It's the PERs pension only because that's the portion that the district pays directly. The TPAF is paid by the state. And so we have seen over the last five years that that liability has been decreasing rather significantly. And again, the State Division of Pensions has an audit by KPMG, and we are, you know, auditors are provided that information, and then we have to extract certain information about the district and make some calculations, but other than that, we don't audit that information. And then again, because there are salaries charged to the extended day program, you see that a portion of that, it's done ratably, their salaries compared to the total salaries, and then their portion of the net liability compared to the total. So it's par-rated. And I just want to say this again for anybody on the board who is new, that it's a quite extensive audit. It's not just a financial statement audit to make sure that the state, that the financial statements are stated properly, but it's also NJ DOE compliance, and they're constantly adding more things to your plate and our plate. And in addition, when you receive more than $750,000 in federal grants and state grants, you can have a federal and a state single audit. And so of the programs that the district spends that on, we have to complete a worksheet, and it's based on risk, and we can't audit the same programs year after year when something's new, such as the COVID grants. They have a higher risk because they're new, and they have to be selected. So through, and there's a compliance supplement. So it's not detailed in the extent that they came out to monitor. They would probably find a lot more things than we do, but we're given a compliance supplement, and we check those policies and procedures. And with all of that, all of that, and it's extensive, there are no audit recommendations. You have an incredible staff. I think it starts here, I say this to every board every year, the tone in the district starts here, and it permeates throughout, and every single person that works with us on the audit is so cooperative and very knowledgeable, and it is a true pleasure to work with the district. And so, final comment is, my firm always touts themselves on saying something to boards, so in every single audit that we release this year, we said, be mindful of those COVID grants because if they come out to monitor, they're going to be very stringent. And so we go to training, your staff has been to training, we think we have it covered, but you never know. And then, one last comment. The audit would have been delivered earlier, but the district applies for the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence, which is an astounding credit out of 20-something districts that I handle personally to apply for that. So it is quite extensive. And with that, last year, the Gatsby 75 information is post-employment benefit information that, again, comes from the State Division of Pensions. Last year, we did not qualify our opinion for this information, and we moved forward, and some people in the state didn't like that. And so they said, okay, you can't issue a report with modified opinion, but we could. And then the people at ASBO International said, you cannot if you apply for the certificate. So the decision was made, we're going to wait for the information. So New Jersey ASBO called me and said, you know, could you gather some information to say when this information comes out? It's not only Gatsby 75, it's the Gatsby 68 pension information. There's information in the report that used to come out in July, it's the on-behalf numbers, and they're in the budgeted financials, and so it's very key. We could never release an audit without it. And in doing that research, I found that over the last five years, the information just keeps coming out a month later, a month later, a month later. And so school districts in New Jersey, 565 of them, suffer, and their auditors suffer because Division of Pensions can't get their audits done in a timely fashion. So the rule is that if you have a financial statement audit dated June 30th of '22, you have to include the Gatsby 75 information from June of '21. And that came out on January 17th of this year. So it's, I think it made a little bit of noise this year, and I think maybe we're going to start to get things a little faster. So that's why the audit is so late. I apologize for that, but you have a really good result, and you're compliant.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Pizaccos.
I thank you for coming out tonight, and I know you periodically keep in touch with our administrators, and I agree with you, they do do a great job. Just wanted to see, other than the COVID grants and what you just mentioned, any other accounting changes that your firm might be bracing for that could affect the 2023 fiscal year-end?
Yes. There's a new standard that's out that's going to be effective for the June 23 audit. It's relating to subscription agreements for technology contracts. We're just delving into it now, and between February, we're doing several presentations on that by June to our clients and to school community, New Jersey ASBO. It's always something.
Anyone else? Mrs. Kuzin.
I just want to congratulate the business office on a job well-done and, once again, receiving the award from ASBO.
And so school districts in New Jersey, 565 of them, suffer, and their auditors suffer because Division of Pensions can't get their audits done in a timely fashion. So the rule is that if you have a financial statement audit dated June 30th of '22, you have to include the Gatsby '75 information from June of '21. And that came out on January 17th of this year. So it's, I think it made a little bit of noise this year, and I think maybe we're going to start to get things a little faster. So that's why the audit is so late. I apologize for that, but you have a really good result, and you're compliant.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Prasakos.
I thank you for coming out tonight, and I know you periodically keep in touch with our administrators, and I agree with you, they do do a great job. Just wanted to see, other than the COVID grants and what you just mentioned, any other accounting changes that your firm might be bracing for that could affect the 2023 fiscal year-end?
Yes. There's a new standard that's out that's going to be effective for the June '23 audit. It's relating to subscription agreements for technology contracts. We're just delving into it now. And between February, we're doing several presentations on that by June to our clients and to school community, New Jersey ASBO. It's always something.
Anyone else? Mrs. Kazan.
I just want to congratulate the business office on a job well done, and once again, receiving the award from ASBO. Just from what I know at the state level, a lot of boards of ed would dream of having this type of audit result. So, thank you to them.
And I'd just like to reiterate my thanks to the business office and everything they do. It is a major, major undertaking every day, and to come back with no audit findings, that is kudos to everybody there. That means all the dots, all the dots are put in the right places, no erasures, and the state always is going to throw a monkey wrench, because they can never leave well enough alone. And I thank you for all your hard work too, and all your people who have been tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Mr. Moffett, Dr. Toback?
I was, I just wanted to take a moment to also congratulate the business office. Mrs. Leidig and Mr. Moffett do a wonderful job every day, and so there's a lot of reasons to be thankful for their outstanding work. And also, Mr. Pavlik, our student representatives have some schoolwork to do, so they're wondering if they could read the donations.
Yes.
The first donation is from the Wayne Education Foundation on February 9th, 2023, to A.P. Turhune Elementary School, to be used towards the purchase of a playground communication board in the amount of $605. The next is to Tunis Dai Elementary School, in the amount of $605. The next donation is to Lafayette Elementary School, in the amount of $1,635. The next is to John F. Kennedy Elementary School, in the amount of $1,635. The next is to James Fallon Elementary School, in the amount of $1,635.
The next donation is to Packenac Elementary School, with a donation amount, a donation amount of $1,635. The next donation is to Randall Carter Elementary School, with a donation amount of $1,635. The next donation is to Ryerson Elementary School, with a donation amount of $1,635. The next donation is to Preakness Early Childhood Center, with a donation amount of $1,045. The next donation is to Lafayette Elementary School, and this donation is to be used for the Community Garden Project from the Luxury Concierge, with a donation amount of $4,000. The next donation is to Wayne Hills High School from Columbia Bank, and this is to be used for student activities, with a donation amount of $250.
Thank you, and to all those who donate it, we thank you as well. Guys, thank you very much. Homework time. Mr. Moffett, being you received such glowing recommendation tonight, we'll allow you to read all the revisions to the agenda.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
But I do want to point out an individual in this room that helped out with all the accounting work. You don't know inside the district and the amount of time and effort it takes to keep track of the new grants. And Cheryl Leidig was key in that effort, spearheading all the compliance issues, not only with internally the business office staff, but also throughout the district, assisting in all those grant activities, on top of the normal activities of preparing for audit. I do know she takes pride in her work, and I would say leaves a lot of the information in a condition where it's very easy to work with for our auditors. And I know our auditing firm is very appreciative of all the extra work she puts in to present the information the way she does. So I thank you and the rest of our staff. Thank you. On with my prize. We are adding some additional items on tonight's agenda, and hopefully I don't have to use too much water to get through it. Number one, in addition, under S, Emergent Education, we're going to add number nine, Approval of Suspension. Recommendation action is as follows. Resolve that the Board affirm the Superintendent's decision on suspension of student ID number 4237968857, as required by NJAC 6A:16-7.2. Also in addition tonight, under T, Emergent Human Resources, T1, we're adding number nine, Maria Ikhiv, I V A K H I V, PT, Paraprofessionals, Pine Lake Elementary, FTE.5, PC number 14-08-49/EOW, and that's account number 1110-100-101-54-0, effective February 15th, 2023. Resignation at $20,180, step six of the Para Elementary Salary Guide. We're also adding T4, Appointment of District Staff, under number nine. The position is for Dr. Jean, and I'll spell the last name, is C-H-O-E-L-A-N-K, as interim principal at Pines Lake Elementary, full-time equivalent of .60. UPC number is 02-08-42/BCV, and that's account line 11-000-240-103-09-010. Effective date is March 13th, 2023, or as soon as possible through June 30, 2023, at a salary of $174,603 prorated, plus $3,000 for a doctoral stipend, which is also prorated. Guide step is MA plus 30, KA-P, step 12 of the WTAA agreement with no benefits, up to four days a week. Add, also under Emergent Human Resources, adding T13, which is Approval to Remove from Administrative Leave. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves to remove employee ID number 9340 from paid administrative leave, effective February 23rd, 2023. Moving on to the next section is V, Emergent School Resource Finance. We're going to add a number four, Approval of Contract. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, hereby approves entering into retainer agreement for specialized legal services with the law offices of Peter W. Till, dated February 8th, 2023, not to exceed $10,000 as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. Under X, Emergent Legal, we'll add number one, which is an Approval of Settlement Agreement. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, hereby approves the Employment Separation Agreement and Release in the Matter of Employee ID number 9340, dated February 23rd, 2023, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute the same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. And lastly, we'll be adding, again, under Section X, Emergent Legal, number two, adding number two, which reads, it's an Approval of Settlement Agreement and General Release. That reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, hereby approves the settlement agreement and general release in the matter of student ID number 100445045, OAL docket number EDS00108-20N, Agency Reference Number 2020-30928, dated February 11, 2023, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of this settlement to approve, to further implement same. And that concludes the additions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your patience.
This portion of the meeting now is open for citizens to comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Second.
Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Kazan. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Senior way comes in.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Duffy, Mr. Giordano. Let's move on. We had some committees meet tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik. The Communications Committee met tonight. Administrator was Dr. Toback. I was chairing. Board committee members present were Mr. Sean Duffy, Mrs. Barbara Rigoloso. Business discussed. We looked at Communication Committee Goals Policy 9120. We looked at advertising communication regarding BOE meetings, one of our bylaws, 062. We did have some good news. We have a firm coming in, the Laura Bishop Communication Group, to discuss looking into the big news coming up in the next few months about looking at public stuff for building items, for construction. They did a quick audit of our Communication Committee. They very much like the concept of a citizens' group formation. They're very much for that. And looking over our communications in general, it's an excellent foundation to be using for getting public opinion, public support on some very, very important issues. We have a lot of the groundwork laid in place already. We're very, very happy with that. We went over the concept of establishing a more well-defined communication protocol if there's an issue. We always had that communication protocol in place, but to enforce, if there's a problem, go to your teacher first, with the teacher, go to the administrator, and bill yourselves up, because if it comes to us directly, the very first thing we do is we pass it to Dr. Toback, that Toback passes it right back down to the teacher, because that's the protocol, and that's the way these things should be addressed. We're going to try to make sure we have that in some places a little clear, to make sure that's well more defined, so that parents or students or people involved know what they're working with. We went over some of our great news releases, looking at our sports teams and some of their activities. There were some comments about our, we have a weekly e-newsletter that is run by Dr. Toback. We encourage you all to read it. And at the last meeting, we were proud to announce that our monthly newsletter gets over 12,000 views. So that's a significant way to communicate with the district. So check out the website, and you'll find out, you won't be disappointed. Sit down with a cup of coffee and go over stuff there. And of course, if you have questions, you can always come contact us also. That is our communications for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities and Transportation Committee met this evening with myself, Mr. Prasakos, administrators Lauren Tibbetts, Peter Romaine, Richard Skwitzky, William Moffett, and we had a special guest, Mr. Duffy, joined us. Mr. Battershall, as you can see, is not here this evening. First, the agenda, or agenda items, nothing notable there, they're on the agenda. Meeting minutes, we went over those, no problems as well. And then we discussed some of the summer project, where the applications are pending for APT, Fallon, and Randall Carter staff bathrooms that are much needed. Wayne Hills High School Next Generation Science Lab is also in the application process, as well as HVAC repairs for Wayne Hills High School Board of Ed building. And Skylar Colfax plans are not quite ready yet. They're having an HVAC problem. There was a fire on the roof. Preakness, we discussed the rod grants, and we'll be using that building as a backup for central office, which will have to close down for a major HVAC project going on there. And new bathrooms are being installed for the little kids on the second level, because our program with the ECC and Early Childhood Center is expanding. Our operations update, we've had a few incidents, I'll call them. The Hills Auditorium had a little bit of a flood, something in the ceiling broke, and fortunately, it didn't fall on any of the electrical or sound equipment, and that's being cleaned up. The George Washington Fields have some photographs. Apparently, some people think it's amusing to push the boulders out of the way that are meant to keep people from driving on it and making donuts in it. Now, this is a field that we need to use for our students to play come spring. Of course, unfortunately, it gets done in the dark, we don't know who did it, but I am pleading with the public to remind your children who are old enough to drive that these aren't playgrounds, our fields are important, we need them to be ready for our kids to play on in the spring. Now we have all these ruts in them, and, you know, it's hard to fix those in any quick manner. Grass doesn't grow overnight, and that's only one incident. This happens, unfortunately, regularly, and I don't normally report on it, but I am tonight, because quite frankly, you know, I think it's terrible that there is not pride in our community, among whoever is doing this. We had another incident, Wayne Hills High School. We spent a lot of money on these blankets to go over our baseball fields, so that we could pull them off during spring, and that seed will have grown. Well, someone decided to pull them back and play a baseball game on them with their cleats on, and ruin these seedlings that were just starting to come up to be prepared for us to have beautiful fields for our kids. And then unfortunately, parents show up, and out-of-towners show up, and they say, "Why can't you take care of your fields?" Well, we try, but we need cooperation from the community. So if anybody sees something, please let us know, or if you know who's doing these things, talk to their parents, talk to them, tell them, knock it off. This is taxpayer money. These are our school buildings. Show some pride. So, oh, and there were improvements to the Valley ballfields. Hopefully, they stay improved, if you get a chance to look at those. We've put a lot of new surface things down there that make them look a lot nicer and get them ready for spring. We're updating our district-wide visitor management program, which is a good improvement. I won't get into detail for security reasons. We talked about this at the last meeting, this new program for managing orders for repairs throughout the district and inventory, and we talked about some policy regulations and a student task force initiative they presented to us in the past, and we're going to discuss a possible board resolution with regard to ensuring that Wayne schools move in the area of keeping things as energy efficient and green as possible going forward, something that's always been a goal for us anyway. Went on to the rod grant discussion. Okay, that's all repeat from last year. And then we spoke with Mr. Skwitzky on the transportation side, discussed bus contracts. We currently are short six drivers, which means other people have to pick up the slack, which makes our runs for athletics more difficult. We sometimes have to use other mechanics and such that have CDL training to run those routes. And we're currently, well, we were only down one mechanic, and now we're down two. So if anyone knows, anyone looking for a great job as a mechanic or a bus driver, we also do CDL training in-house. We're approved for that. We have currently six drivers pending, but they've yet to be approved, so these things take time. And we're still, unfortunately, because of the supply chain issue, waiting for three 54-seat buses and two 24-seat vans that still haven't come from two budgets ago. So hopefully, we'll get those at some point, because buses age out at some point, and we certainly don't want them on the road if they're not in excellent condition. And that's it.
You.
My report.
Anyone else? Mrs. Wintek?
Hello. The Ed Committee met via Zoom on January 30th. I met, I was the chair of the committee, met with Mr. Giordano, Barbara Rigoloso, Donna Reichman, and Matt McNelly. We reviewed the minutes from previous meeting. We also reviewed the following policies regarding emergency virtual and remote instruction program, attendance, bilingual, and ESL education, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, student enrollment, and enrollment accounting. We discussed adding new courses, which were accounting. We discussed adding new courses, which were multi-variable calculus, biology honors, and chemistry honors. We also discussed the many dual enrollment opportunities in automotive technology, business, education, social science, arts, and humanities, science, and engineering. If parents are interested, they can see those opportunities on each of the high school's website under Program Studies page on the internet. The dual enrollment classes will receive enriched class waiting, which is great. And we also discussed seal of literacy for bilingual students, where the students who meet the criteria, which are set by the state, will receive the seal of bilingual literacy. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the entire agenda to his consent.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have some retirements. I'll start down to my left. Mr. Prasakos?
Ms. Holly Johnson is retiring as an English teacher at Wayne High School after 19 years. District. In her time, she has taught all grade and ability levels of students. Her passion for literature was always on display, as she wanted her students to leave her classroom with an appreciation for the written word. She has been a great friend and colleague to not only the English department, but also the entire staff at Hills. We wish her all the best in her retirement, when she plans to travel to attend cooking school in Tuscany, see the opera in Milan, the vineyards in the Lower Valley, and Finland for the Aurora Borealis. She also plans lots of visits to Miami to play with her granddaughter.
Mr. Duffy?
This is the retirement of Linda Carrero. Congratulations to Linda Carrero on the announcement of her retirement. She's been a dedicated, appreciated coworker of the Wayne Board Education for many years. She's a wonderful colleague with a true love for teaching and has profoundly changed the lives of so many children. Linda is energetic, passionate, and patient. She has gone above and beyond for each child to learn in each of their interests. She always put the students first and made sure the classroom was prepared for the day and gathered materials for the day to ensure the success of all the students. She has shown dedication, developed trustworthy relationships with everyone she encountered. It's been a pleasure having Linda as a member of the school community. We are confident that she will find the same success in her retirement and continue to touch the lives of so many. We send our best wishes and congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes, thank you. Retirement for Teresa Casper. We would like to thank Teresa Casper for 25 years of service in the Wayne School District. She worked about 15 years in several elementary schools. Eventually, she moved on to Skylar Colfax Middle School, where she developed many close relationships with students and staff. From there, Mrs. Casper transferred to Anthony Wayne Middle School, where she spent the last few years of her career. Mrs. Casper had worked with so many students all over the years. She always thought the little ones were extremely adorable, and some days were challenging. But when she moved on to middle school, she ran into some of her former students, and she was overjoyed to see their independence and maturity and knew that she had positively impacted them. Mrs. Casper also worked one-on-one with several middle school students who thoroughly enjoyed their time with her and flourished by her side. We wish you well in your retirement, and thank you again.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
I'm honored on behalf of the Wayne School Board to honor Liz Tybalt. I have known Liz for over 30 years. We started on the board in nursery school, and I'm so honored to read this. "All great things come to an end. While this is a famous quote, as I write this, I'm unfortunately feeling the mixed emotions of this reality as we congratulate Mrs. Elizabeth Tybalt as she works to complete her last year as a physical education teacher at GW Middle School. During the past 28 years, so many members of the GW and Wayne community were fortunate to know Ms. Tybalt as a teacher, coach, and friend. This year marks the 11th year I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Tybalt and have served as her principal. In this position, I have witnessed firsthand the compassion, caring, and love for our school community that Ms. Tybalt brings every day, and this is what makes her such a special person in our school. As a teacher and a coach, Ms. Tybalt knows exactly what our students need to be, need to know to be successful in class and win on the court and on the field. While her knowledge of physical education and sports had a lot to do with this success, so much more was a result of her knowledge of her students and how to connect with them. While this task may seem difficult for some, it is easy for Ms. Tybalt. All she did was treat her students with the caring and compassion that every student needs. The connections she has made, the connections she has been able to have with her students are ones that will last a lifetime. If you were fortunate to see Ms. Tybalt with her students or watch the high school students come back to visit, it is clear she is an important person in their lives, and they care for her deeply. While it is evident Ms. Tybalt has made an impact with her students and players, she has been equally influential to the staff and the school community. Through the years, so many of us have been touched by Ms. Tybalt's genuine caring and friendship that our personal and professional lives have truly been enriched. Time is always something she makes for all of us. However, there is one group in our school that always receives extra attention from Ms. Tybalt, and that is our students with special needs. While Ms. Tybalt excelled in her other classes, her adaptive physical education class was where she always looked the happiest, and this class was one of our staff's favorite classes to visit. I would be remiss not to acknowledge that Ms. Tybalt played a large role in the development of STARS, students teaching and reaching students at GW long before it became a district program. If there truly is a program that defines the positive impact Ms. Tybalt has had on our schools, this is it. Having students with special needs and students who participate in regular education classes, working and learning together in physical education and academic classes truly highlights the impact we can all have on one another. It goes without saying that George Washington Middle School is a better place because of Mrs. Tybalt. As she finishes the year and we prepare for the new school year, we know we do so with lasting influence that has been left by one of the most caring educators we have had the pleasure to work with. We thank Mrs. Tybalt for all that she has done at our school, and we look forward to finishing her final chapter with her as we continue toward the end of the school year. We will miss you. Congratulations, Liz Tybalt.
Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you. Kathleen Paragallo. Congratulations to Kathleen Paragallo on her upcoming retirement from the Wayne Township Public Schools. Kathy's been a school nurse in Wayne for 28 years. She started her career working in the Learning Center at Ryerson and spent 16 years there before moving to JFK. During her years in Wayne, Kathy has been a tireless and selfless advocate for countless families, helping those who needed it during their most difficult times. Regardless of cost or time, Kathy was willing to donate resources to families and children in our community. Year after year, she worked alongside the PTO, staff, and other organizations to make sure families were able to provide for their children, especially during the holidays. She also helped counsel families and even staff during times of grief, tragedy, or medical necessity so that they felt more comfortable dealing with challenging situations. During the height of COVID-19, Kathy shouldered a heavy workload identifying cases, contact tracing, and communicating with parents while juggling the already demanding responsibilities of her regular nursing roles. Most importantly, throughout her years in Wayne, Kathy has nurtured innumerable children, helping them handle the littlest paper cut to the biggest injuries. She truly loves the students and families she served. School nurses are often unsung heroes who don't get the credit they deserve. There are so many roles that they take on in order to support the physical and emotional well-being of staff and students. At JFK, we are so grateful to Kathy for the investment she has made of herself in our community. As she embarks on retirement, she is planning to spend more time with her family and traveling with her husband. Her commitment to and love for the JFK community will truly be missed. I'm jealous of these retirees and their travel plans. Thank you to Kathleen.
Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. I have a couple of retirement blurbs here. The first one is Desi Young Jr. Desi Young Jr. is retiring after 25 years as a member of our hard-working custodial team. Desi's been a familiar face here at the board office, commencing his career at Wayne Township Public Schools as a night foreman on September 1, 1997, and then working as head custodian, painter, and most recognizable as day floater since 2011. When Desi Jr.'s eldest of five kids, Desi Young, excuse me, Desi Young III joined his dad on the Wayne custodial team in 2001. They became officially known as Big Desi and Little Desi. Peter Romaine calls Desi Mr. Dependable because he could always depend on Desi to do anything the district needs, and this is why he'll be missed by everyone in the district. Desi plans to stay busy after his retirement. As a longtime active member of the United Methodist Church at Patterson, he hopes to volunteer more of his time part-time in their outreach program than instructs community members in trades such as carpentry. "It keeps me out of the house," he says. Desi and his wife Joyce look forward to enjoying the good life, traveling and barking on cruises, and spending time with their five children, 15 grandchildren, by the way, three of which he will plan on teaching to fish this summer. Our Wayne community will miss Big Desi's positive attitude, kindness, generosity, and sense of humor. We thank him for his dedicated service and wish him all the best in the future. My next retirement blurb is Linda Avello. Linda Avello has been a power professional for Wayne Township Public Schools for 17 years. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity as a one-to-one, shared, and classroom power professional, whether working directly with an individual student or as part of a program with more than one student. Ms. Avello puts students' needs first and trades all kids with kindness and respect. Ms. Avello has always collaborated with her staff, never hesitating to adapt to the changing needs of the building or the program. Ms. Avello prepares for this next chapter should be missed by colleagues, teachers, family, and most of all the students. We'd like to thank Ms. Avello for her contributions to Wayne Valley High School and all the schools and programs that she has assisted throughout the years. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors and much enjoyment in your retirement. Thank you.
To all our retirees, I thank you on behalf of the board for your dedicated service to the community and to our children. Thank you. This portion of the meeting will be open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under all business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any item?
Kathy Fredericks, 127 Osage Road in Wayne. Some of you know me. For those that don't know me, I'm a speech pathologist, I'm a certified autism specialist, and I'm an assistive tech professional who specializes in augmentative and alternative communication, or what we call AAC. I retired this month after 23 wonderful years in the Wayne school system and almost 50 doing what I do. I'm here tonight to say kudos to Wayne. Wayne has always been on the cutting edge of using AAC to help students, and I am so proud of my role in advancing AAC in Wayne. I am especially proud of all that we've managed to accomplish using AAC at Pines Lake. Pines Lake exudes an atmosphere of acceptance for each and every student. We don't have a STARS program. Every student at Pines Lake is part of STARS, the entire building. We were recognized in 2022 as the New Jersey Communication Program of the Year. As Mr. Selis has been known to say, "Education is not possible without communication." His vision and support of unique integration opportunities have done a lot to help everything that we've accomplished at Pines Lake. Mr. Selis was recently nominated for the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association 2023 Visionary Leadership Award. That nomination is a real credit not only to him, but to Pines Lake and all of Wayne. With Mr. Selis, Pines Lake has transitioned from the concept of inclusion toward the reality of authentic belonging. The best example of this is the election this year by General Education peers of a self-contained LLD student who uses AAC to support his communication to be Student Council Vice President of Pines Lake. The election of a special ed student to a position this prestigious is unprecedented and a real testament to Mr. Selis's vision of authentic belonging. I want to say thank you to Mr. Selis, to all my wonderful Wayne colleagues, and to all of you for the support I've received over the years regarding the advancement of AAC. I am and always will be very, very proud to have been part of this awesome school system. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Harris. I'm from 100 Union Street in Elizabeth, but I'm a vendor for the township. I just wanted to come introduce myself. I'm interested in if you're aware of the Sustainable Jersey Grants Program for the township to improve indoor air quality, and if so, if they would be applying for that grant to improve the indoor air quality of the schools.
We don't have a cross dialogue.
Oh, okay. Anyway, so now if I reach out, just, you know, looking forward to supporting the district and thank you for tonight. It was a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Second. Duffy, Mrs. Kazan. Any old business, new business, board member comments? Mr. Giordano? He beat you.
Thank you. This is a wonderful evening tonight. You don't get to see many of these when some of our fine educators get honored. It's a bittersweet night because we're saying goodbye to some people and congratulating others. I wanted to make a couple of comments out for the record. My daughter was a friend and a disciple of Mrs. Tybalt, a wonderful woman. She was, she's not the most athletic person. Ms. Tybalt took her in as the manager of the basketball team, where she earned a varsity letter, which is still stuck up on her mirror right now. She's getting ready to graduate college. To this day, she still talks about what she called Tibbs, old Tibbs, and people like her are going to be sorely missed. But understand and recognize all of the wonderful people out there. I want to recognize a second one, just because she was also my daughter's and my son's teacher, Ms. Vitaly. She's over at Lafayette, but she started over in Ryerson. To this day, both of my kids talk about both of those teachers and many other ones. We talk about having teachers who, they work weekends, they work holidays, they work till late in the evening, and they put a lot of sweat and effort in. But I want to let you all know and let those teachers know, the ones who are leaving now and the ones who've been honored, even those who sit in the classroom trying to get to those situations, trying to retire or trying to continue their craft here. Your day may not end at 3 o'clock, but your impact doesn't end in June either. So thank you to you all from the bottom of my heart and the bottom of my family's heart. You're the reason why this education system is wonderful. Thank you.
Mrs. Kazan?
Well, first, I want to really point out the amazing donations we received this evening, tens of thousands of dollars.
tens of thousands of dollars for communication boards, that after having a conversation with Mrs. Fredericks, she was very instrumental in that project and the one at our special needs park over in Green Rail Avenue. It's a wonderful organization, and I just want to piggyback in case maybe you don't hear our soft-spoken superintendent. The Wayne Education Foundation Gala Tuesday, March 28th. Be there. They do wonderful things and add so much value to our schools and programs. Congratulations to all of our teachers and our education support personnel. We can't say enough about them, and we can't thank them enough. I mean, they are the heart and soul of our school district. And we probably already read your blurb, but congratulations again on your retirement, Kathy. You will be missed, and I know yours is a working retirement because you're not going to stop doing what you do for the kids, and we thank you for that.
Mr. Prasakos?
I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight. It was a standing-room-only crowd, and thank you for everyone that remained. Thank you for the kind words, Ms. Fredericks, and for the update on Pines Lake School. Also, I wanted to congratulate and congratulate personally the Governor's Educator Award winners tonight. Congratulations again to our business administrators on the clean, unqualified audit. And I just want to also double down on what Mrs. Kazan mentioned earlier about the vandalism. I mean, it costs us dollars. It costs every single person, every property owner, money for this vandalism. And, I mean, it's tough to see the pictures, but, you know, the donuts on the grass at GW, moving those boulders, moving the blankets, you know, for the grass fields at Wayne Hills, you know, I mean, it's terrible. There's cleats all over the place. And there's cameras, you know, so you're going to get caught. And something that wasn't mentioned was, you know, the garbage and tires thrown behind Randall Carter, you know? Somebody needs to clean those up, you know, and it costs money. So, so just, you know, everybody, if you see something, say something. But, you know, there's cameras now. It's 2023. You know, you want to show up to the police and confess? Feel free. Thanks.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes, thank you. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Baba for his service. He's not here, but I failed to say that earlier. I would also like to congratulate all of the teachers and educational service professionals honored today. Thank you for all that you do. And last, but not least, I would like to wish good luck to both Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley, to your teams, they're competing this Saturday at their state's competition in Linkroft, New Jersey. So, good luck. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Duffy?
Ms. Fredericks, congratulations. Thank you for your service and all the students that you've touched throughout the years, as well to all the other retirees and all the teachers that were awarded tonight and all the teachers in this district. It's what makes Wayne the top school system in the state. Appreciate all your service. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
I'd just like to say congratulations to all the teachers we honored tonight and to all the teachers in our district and administration. Thanks for your time and your dedication to our students. I also like to give a shout out to Wayne Valley Boys Basketball and Wayne Hills Girls Basketball. They had, they both represented Wayne in our finals in the Biscay County Tournament this Saturday. It was really fun to watch, and they did a great job. Shout out to our business office, Mr. Moffett, and everyone that helps you get the numbers that we're looking for. And last but not least, a shout out to my friend, Catherine Fredericks. Thank you for all you have done for the Wayne students. We really appreciate it. You are one in a million. Jinkuia.
Again, thank you to all our teachers with the Governor's Award. It is quite prestigious that your colleagues think of you the way they do. We have great teachers here. We have the best teachers here in the state, if not the country, who give every day and sometimes underappreciate. Mrs. Fredericks, thank you for everything you've done. I've known you a long time. We're going to leave it at that. Nobody understands, or very few people, I should say, understand the role assistive technology plays in a classroom. It brings the student, the special needs student, on par in most cases with the regular ed students in the classroom. And to see a smile on a child's face, that's what it's all about. Thank you for everything. And I know you're not going away. You know, the vandalism on the fields, listen, folks, that affects, it comes out of your pockets, comes out of our pockets. It impacts the PAL, the Boys Club, the other people who use our fields. There's no reason for it. And to those people who want to do it, you will get caught, and you will pay for what you did. Before I wrap up, Dr. Toback, any comments? Very good. Mr. Duffy?
Second.
Yeah. Mr. Duffy, Mr. Giordano?
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Hey, Joseph? Joseph?